Welcome to our September Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Outer-Fried, John Green, Tom Gretn, Scott Latham, Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised if they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. And in the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles. Thank you. The first thing on our agenda is the first hearing of visitors. At this time, we request questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Would anyone care to address the board at this time? It's almost different in here. No? Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd. Also, our financial matters, which are the schedule of bills, the treasurer's report from August, the monthly budget status reports, transfers, extra classroom activity fund. We're surplusing a whole bunch of stuff. And of course, I can't see.
Overhead projectors.
Yeah, it looks like VHS. There's probably like eight tracks in here, too. There's a contract with LaSalle School included in this. Also, as a donation, and I want to read this, and I would ask Patty to send a thank you on behalf of the district.
Yes, absolutely.
The Cito Foundation has donated the following items to Southold's boating safety class: life jacket challenge prize pack, Onyx manual inflatable life jacket, a hay wave ready rider safety pack wrist flag, fish gills floating sunglasses, my apologies for not pronouncing these correctly, some kind of flare, and an Onyx towel. Also included, the class of 1997 has donated $1,275 to help purchase an AED in remembrance of their classmate Stephen Walsh. I believe they wanted to talk about, or his brother wanted to come and say something. Anyway, wait. He was a former alumni of Southold, and I think that's very generous, and they should be acknowledged for that as well. It also includes our CSE recommendations. Are there any questions or comments from the board on the consent agenda? A motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's that meeting where we establish our tax levy. In May, the taxpayers approved the 2023-2024 general fund budget in the amount of $33,168,000. The tax levy associated with this budget is estimated to be an increase of 2.94% from 2022-2023. I am seeking a resolution establishing the tax levy for the 2023-2024 school year at Any comments or questions? A motion to accept?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All business? Anybody have any all business? Superintendent's report. Dr. Moore, this is always a good report at the beginning of the year.
Yep. So, it's been a wonderful start of the year. I'm going to jump over there because I'm going to use this projector. It's really been a great start. I was out today at tennis senior day. Wonderful to have the kids back. Schools are really kind of boring places without kids. Do I have to do something? Just click?
Yep.
Ah, fancy. So, it's really been a great start of the year, being outside with the kids at events, both elementary and secondary, walking around and seeing them in classrooms. It's, you know, we have great participation in all of our programs. You know, I know that our numbers are shrinking a little bit, but the truth is, we really have a wonderful group of kids, a wonderful group of teachers, the parents I get to see up here after school. Also, homecoming this Saturday. I encourage anybody that has a chance to come out, come. We have four sporting events going on for a period of five or six hours, and there'll be a whole bunch of activities with a number of our different high school clubs. So, it really has been a nice start. We had College Day today. There were well over 100 colleges here, representatives, ninth through 12th grade. Got to come down and visit with the college reps and get information about the different schools. I got to see my alumnus rep, so it's nice. So, the other two things that I was going to talk about today are our SEL initiative. We sent a letter home to all the families explaining some of this, and the board had asked if I gave a little more information about it at a board meeting, which I had planned on doing already. Social-emotional learning is a developmental process that begins at birth and evolves throughout our entire lifespan. We're always developing socially. You know, it's a process which children, adolescents, and adults learn skills to support healthy development and relationships, you know. It is something that has become really a focus point in schools, especially since the pandemic. There have been marked numbers of disciplinary incidences. You know, we spent a lot of time apart, and that has created some difficulties, especially for younger kids that have missed time in those years where socialization is really the key part of what they do in school. Having been an elementary educator for 13 years, you know, as simple as playing on the playground is a time where kids can develop those social skills, where you learn that you don't always win, you learn that you have to compromise, you learn that you have to get along with people. You know, you learn that, like, you know, some people you like and some people you don't, but you still have to learn how to live in this world with them and manage your life with them. And, you know, they missed out on those things. So, based on information from surveys we got from students, surveys we got from parents and from teachers, we sent home our data triangle survey annually, you know, and state and federal agencies and information that's been shared with us, discipline referral data. We decided that this was an area that we really wanted to focus on. We introduced it last year in a very kind of loose, try it as you like way. This year, we've gotten a little more organized in that we decided that we're going to have seven focus areas, one for each of the seven months that we choose. September, December, and June, we will not have a focus because those are months that really you get hung up with Regents exams and holidays and the start of school, so we felt it would be a little overwhelming to everybody, including our kids and families. And we are going to have focuses for the other seven months. A letter will go home telling everybody what they are, and then we will send reminders in those months. We ask our families to engage in conversations with their children centered around these different social-emotional competencies in those months. I will give you an example of that right after Eric tells me how to start this four-minute video. Just click it.
Social and emotional learning: transforming education. Social and emotional learning is the key to transforming education. Research-based data makes it clear that quality SEL programs provide the tools to increase teachers' effectiveness and students' academic and social outcomes. The Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning defines SEL as the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to: develop healthy identities; manage emotions; achieve personal and collective goals; feel and show empathy for others; establish and maintain supportive relationships; and make responsible and caring decisions. The Rethink Ed Social and Emotional Learning Program aligns with the Five Castle Competencies: integrating responsible decision-making as an essential component of every lesson. The program includes lessons for students and adults on 30 SEL topics. These lessons create a comprehensive spiral curriculum to develop the language and strategies necessary for students' social, emotional, and academic growth, and educators' well-being. The awareness of self and others lessons begin with the premise that to fully understand oneself, a person must not only identify their own emotions, values, wants, and needs, but also understand that others have emotions, values, wants, and needs that may be similar to and different from their own. This key understanding informs the other four competencies. The self-management lessons provide strategies for developing positive responses to stress as well as strategies for solving problems and setting goals. The social skills lessons explore pro-social behaviors to build, maintain, and navigate personal and professional relationships. The social awareness lessons introduce skills to empathize with and understand the perspectives of others, as well as explore one's purpose and system of support. And the self-care lessons focus on skills that help individuals create a healthy personal environment and care for their physical, mental, and emotional wellness. Clear objectives for each lesson make it possible to build a scope and sequence that meets the needs of all students and reinforces the learning throughout the curriculum and the school day. Prioritizing social and emotional learning is essential to help students reach their full potential. SEL provides the tools to be successful in the 21st century by developing skills that promote critical thinking, creativity, effective communication, and collaboration within the academic content. While SEL provides meaningful support for all students, it also breaks down the strategies and develops a common language to offer a focused, multi-tiered system of support for students who may experience greater academic, social, and behavioral challenges. SEL programs have been found to positively impact academic success by increasing students' self-esteem and positive attitudes towards school, leading to increased attendance and reduced discipline referrals. The evidence-based outcomes of teaching social and emotional learning make it clear that SEL is an integral part of addressing holistic student success. However, there can be no SEL for students without first prioritizing SEL for the adults on campus. Evidence shows that when teachers have the space and time to develop their own social and emotional learning, they are better able to: build and maintain healthy relationships; de-escalate conflicts; find effective solutions; and model transformative SEL skills in their classrooms. Additionally, teachers who engage in SEL for themselves report less burnout and a better ability to manage the pressures of their job. When educators hone their own SEL skills, the challenges of teaching don't go away, but the way they view and address the challenges change, making a better experience for both teachers and students. A district or school-wide SEL program for students and adults provides the foundation to promote teacher efficacy, to build successful schools that empower all students to learn, grow, and develop the skills to be the best version of themselves.
So, Rethink Education is a company that we have contacted with, and we are utilizing our grant, some of our grant funds to purchase some of their materials to work with our kids. Now, the reality is that all of these skills are present in schools already, at many different varying levels. You have some people that are masterful with them, and you have others that, you know, are great in some areas and not as much as, just like we see in the rest of the world the way it is. You know, there are certain people that are fantastic at certain things. What this does is it gives us a more defined focus. It allows us to share with our families and our communities what particular skills we're focusing on, and it gives us a more unified language. It also gives us the research through Yale University, Harvard University, and a number of the different institutions that Rethink Ed and the Castle Collaborate work with. They're different organizations. Rethink Ed takes from Castle because they happen to be one of the leading organizations in this particular area. You know, so it really just allows us to refine and focus more on some of these things for both our adults and our kids, and I hope our families. So, you can see across the top there, across the top there, these are the areas that they talked about, the five areas. These are the seven focus points that we took from our faculty and staff. We surveyed them all at the end of the year, and we asked them, based on their interactions with students all throughout the year, which areas they felt would be the most important for us to focus on, and then we calendared into this one. So, we're going to start with respect in October, and respect will hopefully be a focus for us in every class. The particular, the specific lesson, we have different lesson plans, K-12, will only be delivered in A-class on the secondary level, but we still ask all of our other teachers. I can tell you, after 13 years of classroom teaching, you can work respect into your daily activities every day in class, in any class. So, although I might be presenting the definition of respect and why it's important and that type of stuff in my social studies class, we would expect that in all of our other class areas, and then hopefully in our homes, it will be a topic of conversation. And then, you know, learning skills, mindfulness, problem-solving, emotions, what are they and how we manage them, self-advocacy, speaking up for ourselves, and, you know, and being heard about things we feel strongly about, and then safe and ethical behavior, how important it is to engage in that. Are the areas that we chose to focus on, you know, based on our interactions with our young people throughout the many years? And that is our SEL. I'm going to go back to this slide, see if there's any questions.
I just have one. What classes is this going to take place in?
So, in the elementary level, it'll take place in every class. The specific directed lesson will take place in every class. On the secondary level, Mr. Raj is going to divide it up so, like, this month, social studies might deliver the formal lesson. Next month, English might deliver. Next month, it might be delivered in physical education class. And you might deliver a couple of lessons because there are multiple lessons that you can use. Our health educators, our health educator used this more than anybody last year, in case you're on the ballot, and utilized it a hundred and twenty-seven times. It very, very much fits the program and the curriculum that she has to deliver. I can tell you that our new physical education standards relate to these topics and areas, and anybody who's in an elementary class utilizes them daily. So, it'll be delivered in different areas, but even if I'm delivering it in my fifth grade class, then we're expecting that carries over to your music class, your art class.
So, incorporated in every.
So, we're asking everybody, including when kids come home. You know, if you have a third grader, and it's mid-October, you know, we're hoping that you'll have a conversation with them about what they've learned about respect, and why they think it's important to be respectful of people, and how do they show respect, and how do they expect people to be respectful of them. So, you know, we're hoping that that will carry over to everywhere in our community, not just in our classes. The formal lesson will be delivered in classrooms on the elementary level, and then in A-specific class, invariably throughout the year, on the secondary level. Any other questions? Okay. So, the other piece that I know we talked about was our enrollment, just to take a look at it. We had people asking different questions, and I didn't have all the data in front of me. So, I did ask Jennifer for our enrollment for the last 20 years. We also did a projection for the next two. So, you can see in 2003, 2004, we had a high school of 515 students, and we had, I'm sorry, an elementary school of 515 students, and we had a high school of 499 students, a total enrollment of 1,014. Our high point in the last 20 years was in 2005, 2006, we had 1,041. You can see from then on, you know, we've declined our enrollment. You know, when you look at pretty much the last 10 years, you know, as of last school year, let's say, we had 71 students, 386 in the high school, 315. Our elementary school has kind of leveled off. Our classes are, you know, between the high 30s and the upper 40s, whereas in the high school, our two biggest grades are the two that will be leaving us in the next two years, so our high school enrollment will be dropping in the next two years, similar to the way our elementary has. The two yellows are obviously projections. They're rolled out, adding the same kindergartens that we had. Again, because we have the two biggest classes leaving, we still see those. When we get to that, you know, 600 number or so, we should play it out, or we might go up. You know, we do get an influx of kids at times, and like, you never, there's no guarantee with enrollment. We had all the schools in New York State back in early to mid-2000s built. I was on the committee in Apparalee, I was teaching in Comac, and the state demographers came in and told us, you need to build. So, we added a wing on our middle school, we added modulars on the high school, we put a gymnasium on two schools, and our enrollment has dropped precipitously since then. They're down 2,000, 3,000 kids, and there's parts of buildings that we never need. These were the experts from the state that I sat there and listened to as an educator and as a community member. So, there's no guarantees of anything. I can tell you that families are not as large as they used to be. You know, it's not that there's not as many houses or as many people living in different places, but, you know, the typical, I'm of seven. You know, my dad was a truck driver, you know, a delivery driver, my mom was a stay-at-home mom, and most of my friends came from families of five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. That was just kind of the way it was a long time ago as I get older. Now, I have two kids, and most of my friends have two kids, four, one kid, three kids. You know, we don't see the family sizes that we used to, so I think that absolutely has an impact on enrollment. We live in one of the most expensive parts of the country, so that, I believe, also has an impact on our enrollment. How many, you know, I wanted 12 kids. Got older a little very quickly after I got married, but, you know, the truth of the matter is, if I had 12 kids, I don't know what I would do because it's hard. You know, it's very, it's hard, especially with old parents typically work a lot of time now. So, I don't know what will happen with our enrollment, but this is our projection. You know, our goals, as we continue to go forward, are to keep all the quality programs we currently offer, obviously to look at new ones and new different things as they come out, but we, you know, we don't want to lose things because of the fact that our enrollment is changing. You know, we do lose classes. We've lost three or four classes in our elementary school in the last few years, but we did not lose anything that we offered in our elementary school. Our class sizes are still similar to what they were. Our class offerings are still similar to what they were. In the high school, as we have, you know, as we've sized down a little bit with our last couple of classes, we utilized some of the open sections to offer more electives. We have electives in our middle school now, which we never had before. You know, there is a balancing point with that. You know, there's only so many electives you can offer because there's only so many kids to take electives, you know, so that's not a long-term solution, but it was something we were able to do in the last couple of years just because of our changes, you know. So, you know, we want to utilize our resources in a way where we continually add value to our school district, you know.
How do we sustain that?
Well, you know, I think that some of the things that Southold has put in place for probably the last decade, building up reserves, you know, making smart decisions about things like that, you know, we utilize some of our reserve money in our budget every year, which, you know, as we get smaller, that, and the ability to give some of that back is possible. You know, I think that, you know, Southold has made a commitment to, we had a conversation at the last board meeting, someone was asking about our pupil spending. Now, our size and quantity does not afford us the ability to offer as large a classes of certain things. So, Southold in this community and our taxpayers and our board in public have decided, we want AP classes, even if that means it's only going to be nine kids or seven kids. Now, in other districts, a seven-student class is not a problem, no matter what. You know, your cap is 15, and under 15, you don't want it, or your cap is 10 or 20 or whatever they pick. The commitment here has been, we understand that the only way our kids will be able to take an AP class is if they run at seven, and this community has supported that, you know, because they come out and they vote for our budget every year, knowing that those sort of things that we have, our robotics program in a very small place like this, you know, it may not be supported. So, you know, I think that the way that you maintain it is, you have to, you know, we have eliminated three or four teaching positions because we could eliminate them and still offer everything that we needed. And I think that you need to be realistic and look at that. We eliminated another half of one this year, one and a half really, one elementary position, half of a music position. You know, so you have to be diligent about looking at things as they come up and reviewing them, and then you have to, you know, you have to be cognizant of what your community is willing to support, because the fact is, you know, what's supported in our budget, in the budget that our community votes for, is what we offer and what's important. You know, if it's, if there's something that people don't want supported in the budget, then, you know, then we need to listen and be cognizant about that and remove it. You know, there's also, I mean, the reality is that we offer a lot more than what is required. You know, in elementary school, is that really what you're really looking for in that thing? Nothing else. We offer a great deal more than that, but those are the requirements. Why do we offer a great deal more than that? Because that's what our community believes is important, that's what they value, and that's what they vote on every year to offer, you know. So, you know, it's a balance between, everybody wants everything, and the answer can't always be yes, and unfortunately, I'm the person that sometimes has to say no to things. But, you know, the goal is to try to offer everything and continually offer things that add value. You know, I think we do need to look through a value-added lens when we look at things, and they need to be able to offer value to all of our community, or the majority of our community. Any other questions on this? All right, I'll just stop. How do I turn? Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
It's kind of scary, the sustaining part of it. Be interesting to have a program of what's required. Does that conclude your report, Dr. Moore?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very informative, I think. Lots of questions. Okay, we have some personnel changes here. Employees leaving the district, Richard Pisacano, resignation effective August 29th, 2023. Employees entering the district, full-time temporary. Molly Cavanagh is going to be an elementary leave replacement, effective September 26th through December 1st, 2023. And we've got some part-time temporary positions. The Wellness Committee Coordinators, Jessica Santiago. Ambassador, club, excuse me, advisors, Mira Johnson and Jessica Elwood. Substitute teacher A, Devon Busey. Drivers, education instructor, Eric Friend. And we've got some mentor pairs. This is for our new teachers. Nicole Thompson with Leah Leonard. Nicole Tahata with Jason Watanoski. Courtney Kane with Jeff Ellis. And Ryan Davis with Greg Tully. Gosh, I pronounced all those names, didn't I? Right, Patty? The after-school Spanish program will be led by Leah Leonard, and we have a change in appointment from Miriam Heradis, from appointment from an office assistant, assistant Spanish speaking, to senior office assistant, Spanish speaking, effective October 1, 2023. Are there any questions or comments on the personnel recommendations? If not, is there a motion to accept?
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Finance Committee Report. I'm guessing there's none because Brian's not here and you guys haven't met. When is, is it October something due, October?
Quickly, the external audit is due October 15th.
See, I knew that night. I knew that date.
So, we're trying to just have a audit committee meeting before that or soon right after that, and that the next board meeting will have the.
Even though it's after the fact, it's okay.
Yeah, after 20 something, we'll have to report.
Okay.
It's the way the dates.
I knew it was usually around this time. Great, thank you. Building Committee Report. Dr. Green?
Nothing.
Policy Committee. This is our second read on these, so I'm looking for a motion. We discussed these last month for the following revisions, policy revisions. Number 4321, Programs for Students with Disabilities. Number 4321.5, Confidentiality and Access to IEPs, IESPs, and SPs. Number 4327, Homebound Instruction. Number 4772, Graduation Ceremonies. Number 5151, Homeless Children. Number 5151R, Homeless Children Regulation. And number 8414.5, Alcohol and Drug Testing Drivers. These were just changes to policies that are already in effect. If there's no questions or comments, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? New business? No new business. That brings us to our second hearing of visitors. At this time, we will entertain comments and questions about anything district-wise that you might want to come up and talk about. Anybody care to address the board? Take the glasses off. Nothing? Nobody? Okay, then. Board Member Commentary. Do we have a student?
We do. I don't know why he's here tonight, but I know they had a couple sporting events.
Oh, probably, yeah, there's a lot going on this week, but we do have a student.
Yes, we do.
We do.
I would love the student commentary. Not to take away from yours, Dr. Green.
I want to thank the staff.
I wanna thank the staff for smooth opening the school. Thanks for the presentations. I hope, well, let's just hope enrollment levels off a bit. I do think we're gonna have to share more with our surrounding districts, that we really need to look into that to try to keep some of the things we have. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
I have nothing tonight.
So I just have a few things. I would invite everybody to come attend homecoming this weekend. It's always a great day. Once upon a time, there was never a homecoming in Southhold, and then we said, why can't we have a homecoming? And so we do. It's a great community event, it's a great district event, so I invited everybody to come out Saturday, and hopefully the weather's gonna hold off. And thank everybody for their hard work for the opening of school. I agree with Dr. Kreen about the shared classes. I don't know how we sustain for long periods of time, seven students in a class without sharing to offer not only what we have, but expand our offerings. I'd also think it would be interesting for myself certainly, and maybe the community, at a future board meeting, to know what's actually required by the state and what we offer. I'm talking down the road, because I know that takes some time, but I think people will be very surprised as to how much we offer that's not required by the state, and I think people would be quite impressed by how much we offer. We're certainly very proud of our district and what we offer going forward. I'm just gonna make one comment. I'm not gonna bring up the past, but a comment was made last month about board members that perhaps don't have skin in the game because we no longer have students in the district, and I have pretty tough skin, but that one I kind of took a little bit of offense to, because although my children are long out of this district, I worked really, really hard for improvements in this district, including this very library that we're sitting in, and my kids were gone, they were graduated. The turf field, the track, the changes in the elementary school, the tech wing here, and I'm not patting myself on the back, the community supported it, but darn, we worked really, really hard to get the community support, and I knew my kids wouldn't benefit from it because I knew that they were gone. So we work real hard for our community and for all of the students in this district, whether our students still attend here or not. So I took that one a little personally, and I'd ask people to, like, think about people's motives when they sit on boards, and they don't necessarily need to have students or family members involved in certain things to still give it 110%. So that's all I have to say. I thank everybody for coming. Oh, and I have next dates. October 11th is our work session, and our regular meeting is October 25th. At our work sessions, we often have presentations and things like that. It's not a formal meeting, sometimes we take action, but we welcome all of our community to attend every meeting, and I thank everyone for coming, and I ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?